Okay, we'll call a waiting order. This meeting is Young County Commissioners's Court Monday, November the ninth, nine thirty A.M. on this interregional meeting. Make note that it has been posted in the time and order manner required. And that all members of the court are present. All staying this meeting. President, 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 President.
That's right. Our head one, Father, we so thank you for this day. We ask that you give the Brown family. Help their hearts understand. Why, why you took her. There's a reason for everything. We ask that you, God, direct us and help us make the right decisions, decisions you make, you want out of our hearts. We ask that you give their sofas overseas. Ask that you take care of us. God direct us. We ask these things in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On one of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Union Texans, one state under God, one indivisible.
I'm hoping comments, now for the reservations. Welcome Brian Ransh, the potential manager, managing editor of the grant leader. On Friday, I hope we don't leave everybody. Is there any other announcements I think we made?
I have one announcement. The county clerk records, indexes, and images are now available online from nineteen ninety-two to the present.
I think that's due to the president. Well, that'll be great. Also, for anybody that didn't get their information, the municipal judge, Ms. Gina Brown, Vice Marshal, or investigators investigating, it's basically at nine about eight o'clock. Funeral services scheduled here for Graham, I don't know if you've got time, anybody from town. And then I believe the burial will be over at the Crockmawne Cemetery. Out of number four, county clerk meetings from the previous meeting, that's what they said, it was third, twenty thirteen, are there any additions, violations, corrections? Motion for Commissioner Brud, second for Commissioner Wiley, accept open minutes, say presented, all favor, period. I hope. Consider update on securities, and that would, I get a list of security getting requirements.
May in three hundred and seventy, two thousand, three hundred and forty-six.
Motion for Commissioner Wiley, second, for Zay. Besides. To accept that wage as presented, all favor, period. Consider all of their budget increments, budget increments. Consider all payment vouchers.
Vouchers, someone hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents, and I bet a hundred and ten thousand, five forty-eight, eighteen worth of ten.
Some of the vouchers. And motion for Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Brud to make those vouchers as intended, approve of that, all favor, period.
And I also have an interest here, Penny Martin had talked to me about this before, and I just got the invoice last week, but it's a notebook computer system and carrying paints, I guess in your, or through your office, and of course, Agarlock said to pay half, and they're wanting us to pay the other half, which is eight hundred dollars, and I told her some, and other equipment, office equipment, and I have five hundred, and there's three hundred eleven membership dues, which I can take it from, that's paid for half of that.
So, line up, Frank Spur. Yep, yep.
It's in the six-six-eight budget.
They're changing service.
Yes, service, six-six-eight extension service, that'd be moving five hundred from office equipment, actually, I think I would pay for it, in the office equipment, they don't have a few, so pay for it, for that, there's five hundred dollars in there.
Just all Frank Spur, three hundred.
All Frank, Frank Spur, three hundred from membership dues, which is six-six-eight, four eighty-one, down to the office.
Don't move. I have a motion for Commissioner Wiley, second for Commissioner Rogers, to allow a lot of Frank Spur as presented, all favor, period. I don't know, like, consider four-way bonds, there's one in there for Jean Burnett, County Attorney's Office, I believe that's the one, second. I have a motion by Commissioner Brud, second by Commissioner Sykes, to approve that bond, all favor, period. On number nine, I said extension agent Brad Marshall, being on report, request for reimbursement, seven hundred and forty-eight, sixty-two, five hundred and twenty point fifty-nine, respectively, so, period. Motion by Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Wiley, to approve such reports, request for refund, all favor, period. Okay, this is Penny Martin, you got a motion for her.
And before I just kick it off, a new project this year with small engines, and we are looking for a facility to use where we can have our equipment somewhat locked up place with an overhead for weather purposes, whenever winter comes around, we have a facility as well as in the center top. And we were looking at the AC bar, it was passing for permission, if we could use this small corner in the outside activity area, where there's the storage, following up over the corner area, with that little, do you have the top area for that project in place that you say, say that contains while, tools will be taken back and forth with the whole project to your schedule, but the actual equipment, they don't have to work on, because there's solid motors, go parts.
So, they outside the main running on, they on the west side, kitchen across from the.
So, when you walk out the door, you reach your left area. Right now, there's, I have been there the last couple of months, but it's become kind of just a collect-all area of stuff left over, kind of, days, and then.
A lot of that freight station stuff is there, you know, we had to move, there was a solid argument, that corner station pretty, and I think that allowing them to have their activity in that corner would actually precipitate moving that junk, for lack of a better term, but I don't know what exit is.
Because they can restore underneath, the levers, cut it all the way outside.
But I think inside, inside would be better. I visit with Penny about this outside down far end, sorry, you've got some containment down there, but, as you all know, anything visible kind of attracts the opportunity to vandalize or get into thing, having it inside, and I want farthest private because I, I don't think they're college as far as everybody, and the youngsters nowadays don't get an opportunity to put their hands in the machinery and tools like they used to. And I think this is an excellent program, and it'd be a good spot for it.
And the outside, the good place too, is just, with the thing, and they're coming on in the winter months, just with weather conditions, and the outside, the video.
It'll warm it up a little bit. How often do we gonna have these plants?
Probably need at least once a week, or, after Christmas possibly.
On their, their place.
The name is Scott Phillips, he is a diesel mechanic, who does help with his shoots for sports machines, cashier. We have about twenty kids get involved with that, and we have, so the other smaller group have a kid, but probably about seven or eight kids that will be starting off, that will be going into this project, and the time-wise, it'll be actually, it'll be based on the kid, there's real interest, continued interest, and it'll go year-round, and if it's more of education opportunity, it'll go in your session of several months.
Are you gonna put some sort of containment around the area that you're gonna?
We would like it to kind of extend up or something, just to keep everything kind of inside the same area, that's kind of my goal.
I like that idea too, but we've got an arrangement with Commissioner Brud, on the third Monday freight days. Have you, have that, you?
That, that corner's not, the other just been being used as storage throughout the month, it's not being utilized for the booth stay, so, but it can, that's the one thing about the team person outside, it would've taken away from the booth table to sell.
Wouldn't that, is that freezing one, that one? Yes. I would, I would visit with him, see if he can find another corner, I've been in the stuff, see if.
Well, that I think also, just organize better, I think, would, would be a big benefit.
I like that, we vouch physically, at least. What arrangement do we have?
Well, we really don't have one for him to leave stuff there.
That's what?
We don't have an agreement for him to leave his stuff there.
He uses it as a storage.
But I know that he always has, but I don't think, I don't remember ever, you all saying that he can leave.
Do we not have written contract with you? Just a vague rental kind of, it's a power of management, I think, or anything.
But as far as him leaving stuff, I don't even, that has never been discussed on mine.
I would prefer they'll have you above it.
Yeah, yeah, we're all, that'll definitely.
I'll visit with him, we'll get everything. Either way. I don't see why, it would be a good idea to put two walls up in there, with the advanced, or have them, or whatever, just to be, or to keep it safe. Secure, put a wall top on it.
And then two careful parts, which not continue after being allowed, so it's those that are, that's what I think.
Yep. Give me work, use for something you love, but, I like, I just don't, unnecessary crossways, okay?
You'll definitely.
Yeah. I'm, 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 in today's world, field, we have now, small engines, that'd be a big picture, a lot of programs.
The thing with this project too, I, I feel that most, a lot of the kids that would be involved with this are not even the typical contractors that are involved in other projects, so what if we have the new contractors for our older kids, as well as some of those that maybe aren't involved.
Is this costing them?
I don't know. Where, actually, our corporate membership is paid for, and then for this particular project, we have volunteer kids, we're trying to funding for everything, and it's pretty good about, anything on the, for the children's screen, so, but it.
When, how would you get on that?
Um, probably, we have actually, did it get, in a hundred facilities, so probably October, when we come around, we'll get, because of October, being actually, for each one, back to.
I started to see today, there's somebody kids that don't want to go to college, that is.
Other than, say, you're telling us that?
Any, obviously, he actually, he even taught on the junior college of, in the diesel mechanic department, so working with students and things like that, it's a good.
What's the person's name?
Scott Phillips.
You know, maybe if not working to, diesel mechanics, I don't know, these days, could stop it, you just make your, you got to start, get that place started.
Cheryl, give us contact information.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, then, we'll find contact with you.
Yes, sir. And tell them what our intentions are, that way, it's if there, we can make accommodations for that.
That's what I do. I do that. Okay. I guess that would the, motion to take. Motion. I like that motion, second.
Yes.
Only that on the next agenda. You got a part there. Out of number eleven, consider leads online of reg, and acceptance of donations for funding by XTO.
Yeah, Tim Bayes is working on this, and XTO has agreed to pay for this entire invoice, before the shares department had leads online, since they could find people for beds and everything else, but only the shares department and their employees were allowed to use it.
Have we had this for whom?
I don't think so.
Is this on somewhere else?
But we dropped it quick, you said, I think, maybe because it was expensive.
There was a lapse in coverage of it.
So, but they said if we would pick it up and have it, they have sent a check for the, for the lead online.
That's a good check. It's XTO, if we did, who made the motion to accept that donation, funds from XTO Energy for the purpose of funding leads online.
Is this for the entire cost?
Entire cost.
To the base, that they'd only, they'd only keep this as long as they were paying for it, and if they quit paying for it, we'd probably keep it.
Seven ten, is this one year or three years?
One year.
So, this thing, it'll be that for three years if they continue. Officer Rudolph, you here to speak far or against this, sir?
He's on some.
So, here for something else, but I can, this is important.
Get you to ten.
That's the thing, that's the program. Second. Commissioner Wiley, over there, through Wiley. Law, over there, Wiley inside. Okay, that's two, except.
There been a tremendous amount of theft in the oilfield industry, very likely, so. I can understand their investment in this.
Yes.
Don't say this, man. It's good. It's a good public private partnership. What's good about this, is like, they go to this private place, they take a picture, it's almost.
Please, I think we're running with the South.
And then you intend to grab a license?
Got a motion for Commissioner Brud, second, Commissioner Wiley, to accept the donation from XTO Energy for the purpose of funding leads online, all favor, all favor. You're gonna be that online? Out of number twelve, consider CJD grant resolution for our cameras, or Hill County Sheriff's Office, Mr. Jim Rudolph. I think we did this, I suppose this is structured pretty well, same way.
Yes, I, I sent it to Kelly McBride at the governor's office, and she said it looked good, and once you sign it, she said, if I'll send it to her, she'll upload it, and she did it. Right now, there's a fund called, because they didn't have.
The purpose of this is an application to Department of Justice for Department of Cameras, gets their correct search and rescue, and all of the. Online process, I guess, has been accomplished other than this resolution. It says, whereas Young County Commissioners's Court finds the best interest of citizens of Young County that Department of Cameras project, grant number, be operated for the twenty-fourteen fiscal year, and whereas Young County Commissioners's Court agrees to provide zero or set project, as required by CJD grant application, and whereas Young County Commissioners's Court designates John Seville, Young County Judge, as the grant deed's authorized official, the authorized official is given the power to apply, or accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grant on behalf of the agency, now therefore, their job, as Young County Commissioners's Court approves submission of the grant application for the Department of Cameras project to the office of the governor, Department of Justice Division.
Basically, what we're doing here is just giving you permission to sign the resolution, and sign as our representative and administrative program, and we've done everything else, but we have to have this, this resolution, that's going to.
So, the.
The court was recently pretend, after our grant adjustment, we had kind of changed direction, originally, we applied for grant, for spotlight, and then for mortgages, one of the P D's that. Yeah, exactly what the P D has. For less money, we can purchase more units, to equip everybody, share ourselves, all the deputies, it wasn't just the vehicles alone, so if we needed to get outside of the vehicle, start for somebody, which is most likely gonna happen, we would have these units, so.
You want me to work if they're live?
And, and, I actually work for expenses too.
Oh, if you've been, I've been up there. So, measure your temperature regarding. Okay. Out of number, motion by Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Wiley, to approve such resolution for Department of Cameras, all favor, period. Out of number thirteen, discuss courthouse water dripping and drainage damage, drainage issues, talked to Don Dorsey Friday, and we've had a long one discussion regarding to, what we think is the damage to frame line, what he's run, run the end restroom out there, that, we think needs to be dug up in the back way, every input.
No, I think, I think this project is, no, we, we, if you say we won't be happy to do the excavation work again, on that, but I would propose that we wait maybe until after the western heritage today, and then we're gonna do that, so we wouldn't expose the public to any unnecessary hazards.
You don't believe it?
I don't, I don't think it's gonna fix itself, and Don seemed to think it, but anyway, you were down there, I never got to hear the water running under the floor, did you? I see you were coming up in there with the old girl, you think, that, I feel like it just got the same kind of chase, coming out, it looked like it had it up here with this corner here.
He's making a alert, that, probably gone, if we haven't already had it, we wouldn't have that same issue with water seeping in, he said that, we see it, we track it like this, and it appeared to be broke down, so we might do the same thing.
In order to see it, we've got to get it off the top of it, so we'd be happy to do that, but I propose that we do it after the.
But there.
I don't think they have water, when we're renovators, that layer, that equipment over there. Right now, they got the scowl that dug on that side, I think by the time we do it, still have moved around the building, but we'll coordinate with.
How long is that scowl, how long is that scowl?
I guess it's going all the way to third floor. I, I'm not sure, I don't know.
What I'm saying is, if people come any further than that, we'll reach them.
I thought about that too, we find time to get that flag both ways, wouldn't it?
Just the top.
Well, we put a ladder on top of it. Understand, if we should want that, instruct his crew to put a ladder, the low-hanging limb of tree, if you reach the top part of the trees. That may not work, I don't know what. I'm not smitten, no, I'm.
We, we had an offer just the other day, flag boat shitting.
You said you had a, you had a shitting at the flag boat.
And I believe, I'm not sure if it was the same gentleman, but I believe that's happened one time in the past, in the last, third, fifth year, so we, somebody climbed that boat, might have.
Well, that's another problem when you fix courthouse, because right now, the flag always looks like half-matched, like it'll go to the top because of the failure of the pulleys. Well, we're picking that, they had another flag on it, so.
It's got problematic, maybe a problematic, is there a? Okay, address the running issue, at what point in time? Put it on the next, like that, like, build right?
I will make those right?
Just when is?
You think, uh, the twenty?
Eight.
The sixth week?
Okay, then we'll put it on the next agenda.
It's the last weekend.
It's the last weekend? Or, last week, we want to, out of the, Dorsey put us together, I can take order.
Has he already got, sent it forward on the ladder? It's, it's finished, please, we took the barricades, and necessary stuff away from there this morning.
We're gonna need the same end to set up for it.
It'll probably have to be done exactly like the other year was done, except it may be coming from different directions, coming down the north side, rather than, this one I hear was down the west side, more down the north side, I believe, than the southern one.
Well, that's where the break is, and I didn't, didn't think in that.
Nor kind of probably, we're gonna do it on that side. Then after the stove, we need to address the hole of the water, probably next to the courthouse, and talk about maybe doing something different with our plants and water systems.
Yes, sir.
Do a little, those, certain plant, just to make something else.
Okay, with, how, if Dorsey produces a change order, action on. Fire restrictions. And, there, there, northwest corners of Kansas, that, after.
Well, I, I have a problem, I have, is we just don't have anything burned.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Everybody's curious pretty well, about this table.
My, my, where we drive.
During the world drive, yeah.
I'd drive too, but it won't burn much of a fire, but it'll burn.
It'll burn all the, all a little bit, on that part, a little. I'll, I'll say. I thought you were able to get burned down by one.
That's what.
I just wanted, I just wanted it on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't have to spin off.
That other, underlying.
Take no action, no worries.
Any other ladder things to go?
Motion, uh, before we do that, let's say something, we got the notification, traffic from Department, from Springer's Office, about the TRZ, that we need to set up, that's gonna take some time, so we probably need to get started on that, and we may want to look, have a meeting before our next one, even to get the notice of public hearing. Now, about the sixty, they know this up there. And we try to, that, what, kind of, able to build, build, maybe, like, we were male towards. Well, I see that we've got some on the disposal well, you know, the well completions are not gonna be a big thing, or else, some of the other one, they have some small amounts, but we start, the problem with that whole program, is that it doesn't take into consideration counties that have been in the whole business for fifty or sixty years, and has had this done, it seems to be geared towards new completions and new revenues, and so, Young County is gonna be kind of on the tail end of that, but, the letter stated from Springer's Office that every county that applied would receive some funds, so, I would think that setting the TRZ to be within the limits and boundaries of Young County, and all county roadways therein, would suffice, they, they talk about tax rates and all that kind of thing, to be unfunded TRZ, we wouldn't have to set up any kind of taxing entity part, but that's got to be very first on the agenda, before we can even start applying any other one, we gotta have one of those in existence, and it takes sixty to ninety days to get one done, so the quicker we can get on it, the better shape we'll be, January first, when we start out, get the funds.
Before we place any, advice, first of all?
Yes, uh, Jewish Springer's Office will give us all the advice they said that we would need, and they told us that we probably need to.
would need, and they told us that we probably need to consult with our attorney and our, our county association, that is.
Part of that, part of that, uh, setting that zone up, you have to have an advisory board.
You have to set one, the back.
And they would suggest that you need to lease two people from an oil company on that advisory board, and then some other people there from the community, which are three people.
I have not completely read that, read that yet.
I think twenty page document, I believe, I have. Yeah, it's all there. That's part of it, but it starts talking about taxes, if you do do the tax part of it, you, you can only use up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that tax, to fund certain projects out of that, that zone, and I guess you can choose, we'll have to lawyer, see if you choose not to have it, not funded, zone, you can do it.
Of course, we're gonna have to come up with twenty percent of the grant in kind or in cash. And when they talk about turning it, it talks about taking out, but... No, or it's, so, it's just got to be just consulting.
I figure tax, if I had something, relying on ours on something like that.
And, once again, the President's Springer's office is heading point on this thing, and they're only, everybody in this district through this entire process, so all we have to do is stay in touch with them, they'll tell us which way to turn, and how far to go in one direction.
So Mike, how much is that twenty percent, is it just dependent on...
Well, we asked for a hundred thousand dollar worth of money, we're not to split twenty thousand dollars.
That's what I was saying, because this year, in this budget, I have the twenty-five thousand emergency and road bridge, but we don't have it in the fourteen budget.
So that allows you to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, this, this, the in-kind stuff is gonna be the same kind of stuff that we did up under stand, with those bridges.
You can allocate, so now, now, you can get, you can, because this is, this is through text options. So, but we need to get, get the TRZ in place, of course, whether or not we receive ten dollars or ten million, it's not to that.
And I think you'll be surprised, that many new wells has been completed, completed...
All based on completion and revenues.
Yes.
Is that county red, west, blue? Yeah, tran- transportation reinvestment.
Tr- TRZ.
TRZ.
Crease is one, Crease, tires, my, yeah.
I have another here, it's all, uh, here, different places, my, it was in certain, for that, uh... Keep that under, uh, the, that, if necessary, then... On that, we'll, we'll decide what we make, make, uh, in the, in the... Yes, sir. I'll, I'll give, I'll give Travis a call this afternoon, ask him what you do, need to do, so I'll give you a call, what do you, have a special meeting for him. Would that be... Okay, I'm a second, anything, it won't be a emergency. No, that's special. It'll be a regular, a regular coffee.
You can't delay a second, because you're Wiley's motion.
All in, I have it, I have it. Ah, here.